Ultimately, five votes are needed to appoint. Council has decided to follow this appointment process from the charter through its council policy 21 and direction given at the December 2nd meeting. Just as background, the vacancy was advertised within 48 hours and several applicants submitted their applications within the deadline provided, which was seven days. Pursuant to your policy, council can appoint based solely on the applications but has chosen to allow brief two-minute presentations from each applicant, after which council will select finalists by a written ballot, after which council will go to a reception that is open to the public, after which will convene in the regular meeting and then vote on the appointment. For the interview process, each applicant has two minutes to address the council. Council will not discuss the applicants at the time, but then will select up to three by a written ballot. Every council member's ballot will list the applicants and their name. The ballot says round one and is typewritten saying "Vote for one" but has been corrected by hand to say "Vote for three." So you will mark three applicants that you wish to be applicants or finalists for this position. The clerk will then collect the ballots and tally and report the votes without identifying the council members' names. The top three will then be voted on as finalists in the regular meeting after the reception. And if there are ties or more than three people within the top three, we'll determine, council will determine how to proceed at that time. That's what's going to happen now. I will explain this again in the regular meeting, but just I think it's important that I do it now. As I mentioned before, five votes are required to appoint someone to this position. After the reception, there will be another vote by written ballot from among the finalists. Every ballot identifies the round of voting, which I believe will start with round two this time, and you will pick one. The ballot will say your name. Council can discuss specific candidates but has chosen not to in the past. The clerk will collect and read the votes, this time announcing each council member's name and the vote. The clerk retains the ballots. If any member or if any candidate receives five votes on this written ballot, council will then consider a formal motion to appoint that person, which will be conducted by roll call vote. If no person receives a majority, council can vote again or choose to narrow the field in some way.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions by the council about the process as it was explained? The list of applicants is listed by alphabetical order by first name, so I will call the first applicant, Austin Rollinson, for two minutes.
My name is Austin Rollinson. I've applied for this vacancy for a few reasons. The utmost and foremost reason is because there are certain members in our community who feel underrepresented. And unfortunately, the group that is is Generation Z. The average age of city council is 44 years old, while the average age of voting citizens in Commerce City is 32. Generation Z is being faced with more and more political nonsense and more and more political nonsense, not from just federal level, state and locally. This group has more and more have been taught to be out of politics and not into it and more to be invested in their culture and not their politics at large. When I was in Adams City High School and later Lester Arnold High School, we were told all throughout the city and all throughout the state that some boy from Adams County, they won't amount to much. But looking at people like Sean Ford and Dominic Moreno, who have been lights in my aspiration, have shown me that someone who starts young and works your way through can be the next role model for people my age. And the main reason I have stepped up to try to apply for this position is because I want people in my generation to have the joy of having a role model that they can look up to and show to them that some boy from Commerce City, some girl from Commerce City can make a difference, will make a difference, not just in their community but at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Brett Walker.
Good evening, council members. I want to first start off by saying thank you for this honor and privilege to stand in front of you to ask for your vote tonight. This means a lot to the city. I know it means a lot to this council, and I just want to thank you. My name is Brett Walker, and I'm very excited about the open-at-large council member seat for the city of Commerce City. I've been a resident of Commerce City for over 17 years, have a wife and two children that I've raised in the city. I've actually made two choices to move back, or not away from the city, but stayed in the city, and I've chosen to be a part of the city. I'm very proud of Commerce City and all the accomplishments we've done in recent years and for the great history that Commerce City represents in the state of Colorado. Born and raised in Aurora, Colorado, I've known the area. I knew Commerce City well, and driving, I actually decided to go to out-of-state for college. And while always driving towards Nebraska, I would drive through Commerce City and think how great this place was. A lot of new homes moved here in '02, and that's where I set my roots when I was able to do that. So, being a part of the community, I've been part of a lot of different projects. I've been a co-chair for Parks and Rec and golf for over two and a half years, and have done a lot of great things with that. One of my biggest, strongest voices as part of that chamber or that chair was to really make sure that the core city and the newer addition, you know, the newer rec center were, worked well together. So that was one of the big things, is the push on the names and really making sure that we had, you know, more of a whole city instead of a divided city. So that's one of the things. The other one thing I wanted to mention is I do work for the city and county of Denver under Denver Economic Development and Opportunity, and there I work on workforce issues and different issues that cities have a lot to do with, right? So just want to ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next will be Chris Gronquist.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Chris Gronquist, and it gives me great pleasure to be in front of you today. I'm a Colorado native with six children, one grandchild, and one on the way. When it comes to serving the community I live in, my family is no stranger to the commitment necessary. My grandfather was a state trooper for 25 years. My father served on the Douglas County Volunteer Fire Department for 15 years. I currently serve on the Kipkak Board for the city of Commerce City, the Board of Adjustments for Adams County, and I'm a member of the Design Review Committee for my local HOA. I believe it's important to give back to the community that you live in. In the early 2000s, my family and I had to move away from Colorado in order for me to pursue my career. We returned, but while away, I noticed three major things that I missed from my great state of Colorado. The first thing was seeing the buffalo and the local wildlife running in the Rocky Mountain arsenal. Secondly, was the vast diversity that Colorado has to offer. And thirdly, the fact that many communities, including Commerce City, plan for the future. I believe that I have the qualities and the strengths necessary to be, to help the city grow and be prosperous in the future. I look forward to working with each and every council member and the city staff. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next will be Gene Lefel.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Gene Lefel. I'm a 40-year resident of Commerce City, spent my entire adult life here, raised my family here. Spent 500 meetings sitting in this chair right back here, 500 meetings, 500 study sessions, and I don't know how many planning retreats, budget retreats, and every other imaginable meeting they could think of. Start to finish on all those meetings. Very interested in sitting on this council. Sat on the Board of Adjustment right now, I don't know, might be going on a dozen years. I chair that board. I really, I really think that it's important to get a well-rounded representation of the people in the city. I live in the core city. I think the whole city needs to grow together. We don't need to have that separation anymore. They asked about the civics academy and the application thing. I think I pretty well filled that out, although I never did go to the civics academy. I'd like to ask for your support here today. I didn't start in on this yesterday. This is my seventh election I just lost. I'm really good at doing that, and probably the third time I've applied for an appointed position. I don't hail originally from Colorado. Moved here in '76. Was told right away, stay out of Commerce City, so naturally I gravitated right over to here as quick as I could. Been here ever since. I'm a business owner-operator here in the city. I employed 30 people last October at my haunted house operation. I would be very grateful for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next will be Lucy Molina.
Good evening. Thank you for your public service and your commitment to our city. To all the applicants also, thank you for your desire to serve Commerce City. I am a mother, a daughter, a sister, aunt, niece, worker, volunteer, teacher, and friend. I am your neighbor. You already know me through my work in the community with the council also. And I have raised my family, operated a business, and worked in the, in the community of Commerce City. Though these experience, through this experience, I have seen everything the city has to offer and the places we need to improve. I have witnessed from gun violence on my block to the murder of my boss at the Jorieria Londra. I have stood in the lines at the food bank with my neighbors, veterans, elderly, homeless families, as they struggle for a meal after working even two to three jobs. A growing city should not leave its community behind. We must ensure all communities are benefiting from this growth. The wealth of this community is in its people, and that is what we should invest in. I have served as a community volunteer, citizen advocate in our city for many years. As a, I'm already doing the work. I currently serve in the, as a member of the Commerce City Cultural Council, the Oil and Gas Focus Group, the Latino Engagement Task Force with the Police Department, and the Adams 14 District, just to name a few. In doing the work, I have also developed solid relationships with the leaders, representatives, and gatekeepers of our city and state. Now I'm ready to work and do the work alongside with you. This year, just a few weeks ago, I ran for an at-large seat to represent my community. I've heard their stories, shared their experiences, and aim to lead on the issues that impact them above all. I aim to represent all the Commerce City and ensure all their voices be heard. A quality community for a lifetime should include all its people and the lives we want to improve. There's always the good, the bad, and the ugly. We must do the good.
Thank you.
We will close with this scripture, Proverbs. Do not withhold good to those who deserve when it is, when you have the power to act.
Thank you. Maria Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to present before you tonight. I was encouraged to apply because I have time, experience in government, community, nonprofit, and business, and because I have a strong desire to serve in city council. I care about Commerce City every single day. I have been a voice for many in this community for years. I am familiar with rules, regulations, processes, procedures, and understand the five city goals on a daily basis. I believe in our local businesses, our residents, our city employees, and I invested in this community for life. Earlier this year, I came before you for a similar position appointment. The vacancy was left by a woman, a person of color, and from the historic city. The position was replaced by completely the opposite. You now have the opportunity to make that right. Please look at the community you serve and the message that you are sending as representatives of this city. I'm not asking you to vote for me because I am a woman, a person of color, or a member of this community. I am asking you to vote for me because I am trustworthy, I am loyal, I'm a hard worker, and I have always worked in the best interest of this community. Please vote for me because of my experience and because my dedication and passion to serve. I read about the candidates. Every applicant has done great, and I congratulate them in their different skills, and I thank them and respect them as individuals. Now, I look forward to working with every single one of you and making this a better place for our residents to call home and businesses to prosper. If you don't feel that I am the best candidate, please, I ask you that you vote for Lucy Molina, since she got the third number of votes on the last election. I thank you for this opportunity and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Next will be Ramon Alvarado.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. I'm here today for the same reasons I ran for this seat in November, and that is to make a difference and give back to my community that I so much appreciate. Selecting Commerce City as a place to raise a family one day was an easy choice. All the tangible, out-of-tangibles our city offers were obvious reasons, but just as important, that diversity our city offers has been a true blessing. As I ran for this seat and got to know many of our residents, many things resonated with me. In particular, we share many more similarities than differences. And if I have the honor of being selected, I would continue to focus leveraging our similarities and not let our differences hinder our ability to shape and move our city forward. What excites me, what excites me about this opportunity is the city's current goals of having a balanced and thriving economy, effectively improving our residents' level of service, improving community appearance, promoting health, safety, and education, and improving community involvement and trust, all goals I could definitely, could definitely get behind. I have extensive private and state experience serving Coloradans, as well as trustee experience, but more importantly, I possess the soft qualities such as being open-minded, always showing respect, appreciating different working and thinking styles, and helping communicate and celebrate successes, no matter whose idea it was. I have dedicated much time understanding the complex issues our city is contending with by either listening or attending past council meetings. In closing, it would be a true privilege to join you on this very important journey. Know that you will be selecting an individual that truly cares about his community and that truly believes that together, more will always be accomplished than device in this every will. To this end, I would greatly appreciate your strong consideration to join you in delivering a quality community for a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Robin Smith.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and hear my appeal for the open city councilman at-large position. My motivation for applying to the council comes from my experience while working as a first responder in the city. I grew up and live in the core of the city. I rode my bike on the trails as a kid, and I went to school here. I even remember when the arsenal was a sinister and dangerous place. But I didn't really see the whole of the city until I stepped under the ambulance. That day, I took myself out of my comfort zone and began interacting with people I normally would not have seen. It really opened my eyes to the unfiltered and raw city. I step into every part of the city, both the north and the south, and I see both the good and the bad. I'm in one of the only professions where people open their doors and invite me in without even knowing who I am. I'm trusted in my community, and I take that responsibility very seriously. I've lived in Commerce City most of my life, except for when duty to my country called and I joined the Navy. The military is an ultimate melting pot of cultures and, ultimate melting pot of cultures and people from all over the country. I was surrounded by people with extraordinarily large and strong personalities. I was able to navigate these challenges without losing myself, while we were able to debate, compromise, and come to conclusions together on how certain tasks would be accomplished, skills that I think would serve me well as a city council member. The city and I have a very special bond. I grew up here not only in getting older, but allowing myself to grow into the career of helping others. Serving on the council with you would allow me to give back to the community and the people who have given so much to me. You have nine very well-qualified candidates before you, and there's no doubt that any of us would excel at this position. But I love this city. I have roots in this city, and I plan on being here for a long time, and I would love to be a part of the future growth and challenges that will be happening. Thank you.
Thank you. And last will be Roger Japp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to apply for the open position, but first I want to thank you all for volunteering to work in your, and work in our community. Thank you for the sacrifices that you guys make sitting on our current council. Together, we can achieve great things for Commerce City. This was the slogan for my campaign this past fall when I ran for the at-large position. It still embodies what I believe as I approach my application for this vacancy. Balance is a word that I used a lot during my discussions with the many community members I interacted with during my campaign. Balance in listening to all viewpoints, balance in evaluating the views expressed by all of our community members, and balance in coming to a decision that will affect everyone in our community. I believe it is important to have a council member that can achieve this balance, a council member that can balance all of these points, ensuring they are hearing all of the constituents in the city, and make the most informed decision possible for those constituents. That is what I have done for my entire professional career, whether that was when I was a police officer, mediating a family dispute and listening to both sides of the parties involved, or in my current role as an administrator for the state of Colorado, balancing a multimillion-dollar budget every year. That is what I offer you tonight, someone that, working with you together, we can achieve great things for Commerce City. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you. This time, I'll ask the city clerk to distribute the ballots for the selection of the finalists. Each council member will select three applicants to be considered as finalists.
Mr. Mayor, I've requested to speak.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the civic commitment of everyone who is participating in this process tonight and those of you who have gone through the election process. I've thought about this a lot the last two weeks. To honor the popular vote held 45 days ago and to ensure that 2,177 Commerce City voters are not disenfranchised, I move to forego the procedure established by council policy 21 and immediately appoint Lucy Molina as a council member at large.
I have a motion on the floor to forego the council policy and immediately appoint Lucy Molina as councilwoman at large. Is there a second? Councilman Wariola?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Open it up for discussion.
I'd like to point out that this system was designed around 19 months ago. In fact, my own husband went through it on the first go-round. Paulo Diaz's replacement was decided 940 days after his election. Crystal Elliott's replacement was appointed 1,300 days after the election. This is only 45 days after election. The candidates have been tested and vetted in the community, and as Maria Gonzalez graciously pointed out, thank you very much, Maria, I really appreciate that too, is that Lucy Molina is the runner-up. She, among all citywide candidates, came in third in the at-large category and fourth overall. So I really would hope you would consider that this is so very, very different than the two previous appointments.
In counter of that argument and in support of proceeding this process is that if the at-large would have been decided where we picked three instead of two on the ballot, everybody could argue that there would have been much different results potentially.
Councilman Madera.
Yeah, I would just like to correct the appointment, so it's not 45 days after the election. The original election for this seat was over two years ago, so that would make it, you know, over 700 days from that election. So I just wanted to correct that, and this is why we created this process in the first place, is to make a fair process for everyone whenever a seat became vacant. And so, you know, just to drop the process and appoint someone without going through the process, I don't think would be fair to everyone who took the time to fill out the application, which are very in-depth. They provide their resumes and answer a series of questions, and everyone that came up here today to give their two-minute speeches to why they should be appointed, so I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilman Madera. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor to drop the process and appoint Lucy Molina. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
May I speak again, sir?
Go ahead.
I think that I'm going to let this process proceed as it was determined, and I will withdraw this motion. But I want you to know that I do think that it was very important to have that recognized, and I wouldn't want the voters to feel disenfranchised in any fashion, but I don't want to put any members here on the spot either.
All right. The motion has been withdrawn. Is that okay with the individual that made the second? Very good. We'll proceed with the votes. Please fill out your ballot, remembering to pick your top three. While the clerk tallies the vote, immediately following the vote, we will adjourn this meeting. There will be a small reception in the lobby of the Civic Center here. All of the finalists, as well as all the public, is welcome to attend the reception. There are light snacks and drinks available as well in that reception, so we will wait for the results to come up and then adjourn the meeting.
We have one vote for Austin Rollinson, one vote for Gene Lefel, one vote for Robin Smith. We have one vote for Gene Lefel, one vote for Maria Gonzalez, one vote, one vote for Ramon Alvarado. We have one vote for Lucy Molina, one vote for Maria Gonzalez, one vote for Ramon Alvarado. We have one vote for Maria Gonzalez, one vote for Ramon Alvarado, one vote for Robin We have one vote for Lucy Molina, one vote for Maria Gonzalez, one vote for Brett Walker, one vote for Robin Smith, one vote for Roger Japp. We have one vote for Brett Walker, one vote for Robin Smith, one vote for Roger Japp. One vote for Chris Gronquist, one vote for Robin Smith, one vote for Roger Japp. That concludes round one.
Thank you. Our top three, we have a tie at this point, so we will advance four finalists, correct?
Yes. That would be, if all council consents to that, that would be consistent to allow the top two, or top two and then the tied for three.
Currently, we have Robin Smith in the lead with five votes, Maria Gonzalez with four votes, Ramon Alvarado and Roger Japp tied for four votes. votes, Ramon Alvarado and Roger Japp tied for four votes. What is council's desire on that? Councilman Madera?
I move to advance the top four vote-getters as finalists.
I have a motion to advance the top four. Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to advance the top four as finalists. Any discussion on the matter? Take a roll call vote. All those in favor of advancing the top four as finalists, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Our finalists are Robin Smith, Maria Gonzalez, Ramon Alvarado, and Roger Japp. This time, this meeting is adjourned.